It is four oh one, according to my clock, so we're gonna start late, which is not usual for us. But I see that we have a quorum of the city council, city of Hillsborough in the room. So I will call our city of Hillsborough city council meeting to order. First item up on our agenda this afternoon is the approval of our consent agenda. And we have three items under our consent agenda today. Uh, first item is vouchers totaling four hundred fifty eight thousand, seven hundred twenty eight dollars, ten cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Any questions regarding those vouchers? Next, uh, we have minutes from our January seven, twenty twenty five regular meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any corrections or questions regarding the minutes? Finally, we have CDBG vouchers totaling nine thousand four hundred fifty dollars. Everyone received copies of those. Any questions? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second? Councilman Wilkins, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we are now to our first opportunity for public comment. Do we have anybody online from the public?
Sir.
Hey, I see none in the room, so we will close our first public comment opportunity and move straight into our business items. First item. Consideration of ordinance fourteen oh two. Correcting an error in the comprehensive schedule fee, uh, comprehensive fee schedule. Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So ordinance fourteen oh two corrects a few accidental errors we made with the fourteen oh one. Uh, course fourteen oh one's a, a big one, and we adjusted the utility rates with that. Uh, there were a couple of items that we didn't end up changing correctly, or well, one of them, we reverted back to an old rate, uh, by accident. Uh, and then the dumpster fees were also supposed to be changed and updated when we, uh, updated the trash fees, because that's what it's based on. Uh, and those didn't get reflected in the table. So what this ordinance does is it changes the bulky item, uh, tire pickup fee back to what it's supposed to be, what you approved originally in fourteen oh one. Uh, and then it resets the dumpster rates, uh, tags that back to what the, the new dumpster rates we approved in fourteen oh one. So, uh, just correcting a few things with that, um, inadvertent errors. So, um, we just wanna make sure that they're corrected on our, our table. Um, of course, anytime we make this, this is the, the, the beauty of the, of the ordinance with the table and the downside is that you have to approve the whole table every time you change something. So, um, it is a lot simpler for us on the staff side, but it also creates a long ordinance so that you have to kinda keep track of everything. But, those are the only things that change in this, um, and so we're recommending adopting fourteen oh two.
Any questions? Hearing none and accept a motion to adopt ordinance fourteen oh two correcting an error in the comprehensive fee schedule. Councilman Jorgensen moves. Councilman McCarty, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council. Councilman Jorgensen?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Wilkins?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty? Councilman By?
Yes.
Ordinance fourteen oh two is hereby adopted and the mayor will sign. We're gonna move on to another ordinance. This one will be fourteen oh three. Setting council meeting times at four P M. Mr. Styles.
Really nothing more to it than that. Um, that's, that's what this ordinance does. It adjusts, uh, article, uh, section one, chapter one, article two, which sets your meeting times. Again, set these at any time. You have to meet at least once by state statute. Set this at any time. Uh, it was changed back when David Lowen was, uh, coaching basketball. And so, uh, before that, it was four o'clock, uh, for many, 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 many years. Um, and so what this would do is just remove that back from six thirty to four P M.
Any questions?
I may be late if we're meeting at four, just for the record.
And for the record, I did talk to your boss and he did approve four o'clock. So, just, just so we're on the record. Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, we'll poll the council. Councilman By?
Yes.
Oh wait, we have to, we have to do a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. We didn't get to that point yet. All right. Okay, Councilman By moves. Is there a second? Councilman Wilkins, seconds. Now, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll poll the council. Councilman By?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Councilman Wilkins?
Yes.
Councilman Jorgensen?
Yes.
Ordinance fourteen oh three, setting council meeting times at four P M is hereby adopted. The mayor will sign. And I want to offer my sincere thank you to all the council for your willingness to make that adjustment. I know that it's gonna make a difference for staff and, uh, so it's much appreciated. So, thank you. Next business item, consideration of a resolution number twenty twenty five dash zero one. Waving GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles for the twenty twenty four audit. Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So this is something we do every year. Uh, governmental accounting is a little bit weird. Uh, we use something called a modified accrual method of accounting. So, um, in, in GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles, you have modified and you have cash basis accounting. So we do something that's kind of a little bit of both. And it's a little odd and a little weird if you've not acclimated to it. Um, and so what this does is it waves those things and, and sets, uh, at the request of our auditors so that they can, uh, use that modified accrual accounting rather than using a direct accrual or a cash basis accounting. So, modified accrual is, is standard for governments. Basically, um, it counts for your expenditure when they approve them and then revenue when it's actually received. So it takes kind of bits and pieces of both. Um, and the idea there is that it safeguards, safeguards the city from overspending their money. Um, so we're actually, you know, we're encumbering money, uh, our encumbering expenses when we, we say, yes, let's do them. Uh, but we're not actually counting the money until it comes in. So, it creates a little bit of a, a safety net, uh, to prevent us from doing something stupid with our money effectively. So, uh, it's, it's pretty much, it's, it's a transparency issue. It's an accountability thing, and it helps us align the statutory requirements for, uh, for the state. So with budget basis and account, um, budget basis and cash basis laws. So, uh, again, this is something we do every year. We've adjusted this over the years. Uh, at one point, we had the wrong, we had the wrong reference in there, and JT actually caught that and brought that to our attention. Uh, so we've made that correction. I, this one is, is good. So we're, uh, recommending adopting resolution two thousand twenty five dash oh one, uh, at the request of Adams Brown.
Any questions?
I do have a question. So I know you said that this is best for just keeping track of just all of our money and whatnot. Is this, I guess, the, is the GAAP the only way to do it, or are there multiple different avenues to, I guess, manage? I mean, I, I'm not imposing switching. I just, I was just wondering, I guess, I get, you know, just how everything, I guess.
Yeah, so, so GAAP is generally account, uh, accepted accounting principles. So it's sort of the na- national standard or the accounting. So it's actually international standard for, uh, accounting. So you either have the cash basis or accrual basis, and those are pretty typical. Uh, if you think about how, how you would run your own, your own finances, it's typically probably cash basis. Where you got money in, you got money out. Kinda count it that way. Uh, this, this is just a, sort of the, uh, this is the accepted standard for governmental, uh, accounting, because it is a little bit different. Um, and so it does end up with this modified accrual, which is, like I say, it's trying to grab the best parts of both. Um, so that you don't, you don't make decisions where you're gonna find yourself, uh, in, in, uh, cash poor effectively, uh, from making different buying decisions. It's a little bit hard to understand, uh, explain. And it'd actually be easier to show you if I, if I had something to show you. Yeah, it's, it's one of those things that if you're not used to it, it gets, it's a little weird and it's hard to wrap your brain around why we would do that. But, yeah, it's, it's, it's the standard for governmental entities.
Is it not state law that we're operating under as well?
Well, theoretically, I think you could operate under, well, you have to, uh, cash basis and budget basis laws. Yes, you do have to meet those requirements, and this helps with that. Um, you could, you could choose to do a full accrual or a full cash basis, uh, accounting on your, your financials, but, um, I, it's not best practice for sure, so.
So this is just essentially just the best way for us to just manage our money, essentially.
Yeah, yeah, I would say so. I mean, it's, it, it's what I'm used to, and over the seventeen years of been investing with governmental accounting, still trying to figure it out. Danielle's probably better. I actually added a hope. So it, it is a little bit of an odd, it's an odd duck. When you start thinking about it, because if you've ever taken an accounting class, it kinda runs counterintuitive to some of the things they teach you in basic accounting, but, uh, it is, it is how we ca- keep track of stuff and it's a safeguard thing.
Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none and accept a, uh, motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash zero one waving GAAP for the twenty twenty four audit.
Motion.
Councilman Wilkins moves. Councilman By, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council. Councilman Wilkins?
Yes.
Councilman Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilman? McCarty?
Yes.
Councilman By?
Yes.
You notice how I mix that up? I fooled myself. I fooled myself, and, okay. Resolution twenty twenty five dash zero one is now hereby adopted with a four oh vote. And now we're going to move to a land bank meeting.
And let me share that so we can. I put, yeah, flip your, flip your land bank hand over so we can make sure we got that. So we have to do a land bank meeting every year. Now, it'll let me pull this over. Drag it over here. I can screen share it, but it won't share over to that one. Let me adjust that real quick, sorry. So we have to do this every year. Um, part of the state law that sets up land banks. Okay. Duplicate those displays.
There it is.
Yeah, there we go. Um, so a- as we mean as the land bank, of course, you approve the minutes from everything. And so we've got the December seventeen minutes here for you to approve. Um, so if there's anything with that, we can make any changes with that. Then I'll walk you through everything else that has to do with the land bank.
Okay, so everyone received copies of the minutes?
Yep.
Were there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. Councilman McCarty moves. Councilman Jorgensen, seconds. Is there any further discussion?
Did we cancel out of the city council meeting? Okay.
Where were you? Leave the room? Yeah, I, I get it. Yeah.
Getting your governor's say.
Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Will now move to the review of the twenty twenty four activity and lineup of current property, Mr. Styles.
Okay, so what we had, we sold two properties out of the land bank in twenty twenty four. This was a, the property down in Willow Glen that was sold to Spring, Spring, Spring Branch Construction. So I just popped the notice of sale on there. And this is something that we have to put out, uh, thirty days in advance of actually closing any sale. And so you have that. That's one of the things we did. Um, and then the other piece of property that we just, uh, had sold was over on Grand Street. This is the one that got donated to the city. Uh, right across the street from you. And, um, uh, Gary McLeod purchased that, remodeled it, and it's, it's rented now.
That's great.
So, yeah, it's a huge improvement from what it was. Uh, so we did sell him that, and of course, we did a, a closed bid on that. So he bought it for a little over seven thousand dollars for that. And then now it's back in, back in circulation and being rented. So, he met all the obligations with that. He's got it free and clear, and those are the two sales that we had. Uh, I put the general ledger information in there for you. And it's, I know that's a little bit confusing. You can kinda see the, the rents coming in. Uh, the, the thing is going out. Uh, we did have a repair on the roof of AMPI, which I know was kinda cringy for everybody when they just, we have to do that. Yeah, it just, it kills me whenever we do that. But seventeen thousand dollars went into that. And then we have rents coming in, and then the big thing that usually comes out of there is mowing. Uh, those mowing costs does come out every month during the summertime. Uh, and then we have taxes, which I'm working on. Uh, we have to replat the AMPI. That's really where the problem is. Uh, and we're in the process of replating that so that we can get some of that taken out of the tax rolls. And so those taxes will go down in the next year, hopefully. So that's the plan. Uh, I still feel like they shouldn't charge us those anyway, but that's, is what it is. Uh, and then there's interest that we accrue in that account. So that, that comes in, you can see that as revenue as well. Um, those are all the, the rents. I'm just kinda scrolling through this pretty fast, because I've got uh, a couple of other things there. Oh, we've got overhead doors. So they came in and repaired a door uh, for us. And then we had some work done it, uh, by, uh, plumbing's over at the welding school, uh, which is another one of the partnerships we have with HCC. They're in that building. Um, basically, if you come down here, uh, okay, well, that's all the, the ins and outs. So that's all the transactions that we did. Uh, we'll go over the budget here in a minute, but this is the listing of all the property that we still have within the land bank. You kinda notice, uh, where all that stuff is. Hillsborough Heights is out by, Dollar General and all that stuff over there, Rod's Tower, Palm Tower, excuse me. Uh, that's all that out there. But we actually have the agreement with, um, Midnight Housing. It's under a, uh, an option agreement, but they haven't closed on it yet. They're hoping to do that. It's still in the land bank as of the end of twenty twenty four. Um, so I have to report it as property that we have, and it is, it is under an agreement, um, but we haven't transferred it yet. Uh, we have property around the hospital. There's some stuff at Hillsborough Heights. Uh, that's just empty, empty property. Uh, Willow, or, excuse me, the old hospital itself, about two and, two and a quarter acres. And then we have the Willow Glen property. So you did sell the one property that was basically buildable out there, and the rest of these are just properties that are in phase two of that housing subdivision that never got built. Um, so they all sort of exist. They're all platted. They all have, you know, those type of thing, uh, they have leals and everything. There's no road infrastructure. There's no water infrastructure, and none of that stuff's out there. So you really, you couldn't buy a lot, you know, block one, lot forty and drop a house on it, because there's nothing there. So you kinda, you, you sort of have it as this group. What you wanna do with that, that, and we may have to have a conversation about that at some point. Uh, AMPI is out there too, so that, that all kind of is one big block. And like I mentioned before, we're working on replating that to split that into smaller sections. So we can get that more easily done. Uh, so that's the review of everything that we did this year, and then the, the property that we have within the land bank.
But in Willow Glen, it could be sold to someone that would like to develop it. You know, so it is, because it is platted, it does make it a little more attractive to somebody if they were interested in developing a building home. So, right, that part is done.
That is nice. Yeah, that would be a big step that would already be done, unless they wanted to make some change to the layout. And that would be a huge, huge barrier that they've already finished, so.
And then the land sale for the container homes, is that not factored in to?
No, we never owned that.
Okay.
That was, um, that was owned by, uh, Russell Groves, and so he sold that privately.
Okay.
And if you look at the last column on there, um, so what we have and how this has always been figured is the list price. So if someone came in and wanted to buy a piece of property from us, we just give them the list price. What we do is we figure that off, ten thousand dollars an acre. Um, if you have a fraction of an acre, then it's, you know, to, you know, by that amount, we multiply that out. Uh, some of the commercial properties, like you'll notice the AMPI there is at one and a half million dollars. Like, sure, you were never gonna sell it for one and a half million dollars, and we would probably take an offer for much, much less than that. Um, but that's what it's posted at. So that's sort of what the requirements are for, uh, is what the requirements are for the land bank, um, just to have that out there. So those are the properties we have.
Is that a lot next to AMPI? Is that considered part of AMPI property?
Yeah, it's all one chunk right now. So that's why we have to split it out. If we're gonna build that fire station on there, we're gonna carve it out.
There's actually property outside the city lim- or north of the city limits, prop- that goes along with that.
It goes with that, yeah. The old, uh, lagoons that they had, which we use as, kinda, waste disposal. Various things go out there, you know? Construction waste and things like that.
I know we had some bricks out there at one time, some of the, that we used for Grand Street, and, uh, we've had people, you know, think that they are free for the taking, I know.
Yeah, it's always, it's an uphill fight with some of that stuff sometimes.
But, uh, but it's not, so. Okay.
And then we have, uh, the next thing we have to do is loo- uh, look at a proposed budget for the land bank for the year. Uh, so you can kinda see what we've got. I've been tracking from twenty two all the way through twenty four. Those are actuals, and then the twenty five budget is there proposed. Uh, I usually take it down pretty far, and y- you can kinda see the imbalances we typically have or are pretty low. Uh, that ten thousand dollars in the bottom expenditure piece for the twenty five budget is technically a sweep. Um, the land bank can sweep revenue out of it and, uh, move it to the, to the city effectively and to the general fund if you want to. You don't have to do that, uh, and we may not choose to do that. We just, I wanted to account for that and give us the option if that's something we wanna do in the future. Uh, contractual's there. I'm hoping that, uh, again, we can get some of the property tax knocked off, and so that's why that's less for this year. Commodities is, uh, again, with the, um, mowing primarily, and then we had a couple. We're, we're not planning on doing a seventeen thousand dollar fix to the roof. Um, so that, dropped that down pretty significantly as well. So we only have uh, thirty six thousand that we're planning on spending for the land bank with the total revenue of thirty six thousand eight forty eight, uh, which will give you eight four, eight hundred and forty eight, or eight hundred and eighty four dollars, excuse me, and sixty three cents at the end of the year, if everything goes as planned.
Questions?
What happened in twenty twenty three with the utilities, the four thousand?
Not sure on that. It was probably, we probably had it set up differently in twenty three. I'm not sure why we had a utility bill for that. I know there were some things we didn't have on city utilities, and so that's probably what accounts for that. It could also be tied to, uh, welding school and maybe got, if they did something, uh, it maybe ended up in our utility line when it could be something that's not, that's best necessarily supposed to be there, but.
That's certainly something that we can research.
Yeah.
We can find out what it is and, and Matt can report it at our next meeting.
So what we're looking for today is approval of the budget. If it meets with your approval.
Okay, any more questions? Hearing none, I would consider a motion to adopt the twenty twenty five land bank budget as submitted. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
One second.
Councilman Wilkins, seconds. Is there any further discussion?
And we can find out this question.
Right. We'll definitely get an answer for you, Councilman Wilkins.
Thank you.
So.
Looked like Finn might have been trying to flag you down.
Oh, he's got his hand up.
Oh, yeah, um, I don't know too much about budget stuff. I was just wondering why, um, there's going to be like eight hundred and eighty four dollars left over after thirty six thousand will be spent?
Yeah, we just basically, uh, I kinda made it a round number on the sweep. You could sweep out all of it if you wanted to, but well, it's good practice to at least keep something in there. Um, and that'll be kind of optional as far as how things go. Uh, we wanna set the appropriation amount or the amount we could spend, uh, high enough to cover the expenses without really having to make any modifications. So, uh, the ten thousand is somewhat arbitrary, but it is also just keeping, keeping some money in there.
Oh, so it's, uh, it's ten but only, only eight hundred eighty four will be left over. So where did that number come from?
Right, well, that's with the, with the ten thousand sweep out, uh, the transfer out, that, that, that would leave thirty six, thirty six thousand in expenditures to thirty six thousand eight hundred and eighty four sixty three, uh, in projected revenue. And so the difference there is the eight hundred and eighty four sixty three. Pretty consistent from what we've, you know, been leaving in there at the end of the year.
So includes last year's ending balance?
Mm-hmm. We had a pretty large ending balance last year, but we ended up spending that on a rear. So that's kinda where that.
I thought we weren't gonna talk about that.
I don't want to, but.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the budget. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The budget is approved. And we will now, uh, move out of the land bank meeting and back into our city council meeting. So just look a quick look around. Everybody is in the room. Okay, great. Um, we will now move to the city administrator's report, Mr. Styles.
Uh, okay, so we've got, we had some sad news on, uh, the fifteenth. Carolyn Ray passed away. Um, she'd been working as, as the golf, you know, running the pro shop up at the golf course for, since two thousand fifteen, and maybe a little longer than that. Uh, yeah, she had a, she had a stroke, and uh, it's really unfortunate that, that she, she passed away a day after, uh, after they found her. So, uh, really a, a vibrant, vibrant personality. If you ever talked to her, you would know that. Um, very dedicated. She was really, really dedicated to the golf course, was a really, uh, integral part of our team. Uh, Harvey, you know, Harvey needs some support with, with that too. I think he's a little, well, I know he's broken up and devastated by it, so. Uh, I haven't made funeral arrangements yet, but we'll let you know when we do that. And in, in instances where we have a, a death, in this case of a staff member, but, uh, staff member, family, something like that, we typically do a memorial, uh, for them from the city. Uh, so it's either plant or donation, whatever, whatever the case calls for. So we'll make sure to do that as well. But I'll, I'll pass along those funeral arrangements once we have them. Uh, KPP Solar Project, so we've got everything kind of in place for that, and they've got a project timeline for us. They were supposed to be out here today, but it's too cold. Um, so they're gonna reschedule that first onsite thing to, uh, the first week in February. Uh, but it's still gonna keep us on that, that, that timeline, I think. Um, so Priority Powers, the, the contractor, I guess, for that, and they've got a two hundred and thirty nine day timeline, uh, come in instruction in March of this year, and everything should be fully operational February of next year. Um, so it's pretty, pretty aggressive, but I think it'll be good, and I think that jives with everything KPP was trying to accomplish with that too, so. Uh, thirteen mile road detours, to make everybody aware, uh, Harvey County is actually doing this. It's a large box culvert. There's actually three of them. Kind of are at the beginning, very first mile of thirteen mile road coming off of fifty. So that, starting February third, they're gonna have that road shut down. Uh, so you probably saw the signs around town telling everybody, hey, there's a detour. Um, it really goes in all the way down to Seventieth Street, which is basically where the county line is. Um, and so we're, we're hoping to avoid some confusion and get people going into their own, you know, Nighthawk, or, or they're going that way, or, or K fifteen if they're going the other way. So, that's what they're advising. That's what we're letting everybody know, because we got a lot of questions when they put the signs up. Uh, Marion County Emergency Management Space Rental, uh, they've asked to rent some space from us in the AMPI building. I think we've got, Andrew put together a draft lease, and we've got it over at the county for review right now. So, uh, they would be paying about three hundred dollars, oh, three hundred dollars a month, plus whatever electricity, and they would be responsible for any improvements they wanna make. Um, this is kind of a, kind of a common space where they're gonna be storing stuff. We've got a bunch of stuff in there. Uh, the city Christmas tree that wreaths. We've still got some dance studio stuff in there and museum stuff, and Dale's got a bunch of street things. So, we're gonna reorganize that, and then they'll have space in there too. So that would be kind of the idea. Uh, and that'll save them some money. I think they're paying fifteen hundred right now. Um, it's worth every bit of the three hundred bucks per charge in them. It's not great space, but it's dry and they can get in and out, so. Yeah. Uh, Midnight Housing, the RHID application got approved by the State Department of Commerce. So we're gonna have a resolution for you guys to look at on the fourth. Um, and then there'll be a protest period for the other taxing entities. Uh, had a big meeting with Midnight Housing on Friday afternoon, uh, phone meeting with them. We're finalizing the design and some issues with how the layout looks, and so we'll have that hopefully all knocked out and nailed down by the time, uh, the RHID can be effective, assuming that there's no protest from, uh, the county or school district. Um, and they're hoping to get going right after that. So sometime late March, early April, hopefully, we'll, if everything kinda lines out, uh, will be kinda what we're looking at for breaking ground on that one. Uh, I got your health insurance savings report there for you. For December, we saved thirteen thousand eight hundred, more than that. Uh, seventy seven, eight thirty five for the year. Claims reserve balance is a hundred and eight. So everything's working really well. Um, and that's after we moved over to the K MIT plan. Of course, we're on an eighteen month plan right now, which is sort of that bridge to get us to, to the K MIT calendar dates, but, uh, everything's looking good right now, so I, I'm feeling pretty good about that. Uh, and then you got your KPP bill for December. Uh, so the bill was a hundred and thirty nine. The energy cost adjustment's kind of what got us this time is twenty four thousand, uh, in the black, and so we didn't get a credit back on that. When you look at the twenty three bill, we were ninety six thousand, and a lot of that has to do with that energy cost adjustment. So, um, that's kind of the difference with that. Uh, wanna let everybody know that we are working on revising our snow and ice ordinance. You may not know it, but in the city code, there is this You may not know it, but in the city code, there is a thing for snow and ice. If you go back and look at it, it's a little bit out of date. And there's a few things that need to be changed on that. So we're, we're going to be making some adjustments with that too. So you'll have that to look forward to.
What prompted that?
Time we push snow and ice, Jeff. A little bit of a fight back on some of that stuff. And, you know, most, most people are really good about it. There's just a few things that could be adjusted.
Not the one at the dedicated streets.
Yeah, it's got dedicated streets in it. And some of those we don't do quite that way anymore. Yeah, it's been a minute. And so, yeah, we, we're, we've got, I've got Dale's suggestions here. We'll probably start there and work backwards because his is a, is a little more aggressive than I maybe even want to go. But, yeah, we'll kind of go from there and you'll have a take. So that is everything I have, sir.
Hey, any questions for Mr. Styles?
I do have a question. I know probably isn't going to be a deal yet because nothing has really started melting. But and it goes to our sewer system. Has Morgan mentioned anything in regards of like, when things start melting? If there might be like a, you know, influx of water or anything like that, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And that goes back to our I and I issues. And we do have all the things cleaned out. I think Johnson Company finished their cleanouts and I think they finished their rehabbing too. I have to check with her on that. And they were pretty close if they hadn't. So, yeah, we'll see some of that.
But generally, does it not go down our storm sewer system instead of our sanitary system?
It's supposed to. Yeah.
Where would snow infiltrate into our sanitary sewer?
If there were, i- if it got into, let's say, a manhole, if there was a manhole that was too low or something like that. If somebody had a lot of snow melt on their house and it was, and their house was connected to the sanitary sewer, cross-connected, that would do it. Mostly times it's not a big issue with ice and snow though.
Well, generally speaking, when it seemed, you know, when the snow's this deep, I mean, it, it's not the equivalent to, to the same amount of rainfall. I mean, then snow does not translate inch by, for inch. I don't know how many inches of snow it takes to equal an inch of rain, but it's quite a few.
We do, we do have that in our minds. And we do talk about, do we need to be pushing some slush around too? Do we need to do ice melt sand, those type of things? Because inevitably it'll thaw. And then you get day like today where it's negative nine and it just freezes. Yeah, this sucks. And it's hard to manage, but we try to do it in steps and stages and we watch that. Because we don't want like ice dams and stuff too. We had some, we had one situation with the police department where they had an ice dam on their drainage in their roof and it was raining in their building. They were not happy about that, but it's a, it's the AMPI building. And so it's one of those things. But we got it cleaned out. And so that, once you get that out of the gutter, it flows. But just, there's so much. Sometimes you can't, they have it.
I've noticed some intersections too that tend to get kind of jammed up with some ice from the, from the cross traffic. And then there's that, you know, seems a little bit hazardous, especially if safety vehicles or police needed to get down the roads, even, even just citizens. Is there any, are they, is the city watching any of that to maybe try to clear some of that out?
Yeah, we do. And we send, we do send our, our trucks out. Probably not as much as we should sometimes, but it's hard to stay on top of it. But, yeah. And then we'll do some, we'll do some salt and sand on the major intersection still. Try to break that up. Some of those residential ones though, I mean, they're, they're a little hazardous yet. You just got to take it slow. Yeah, we do try.
Okay, good.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move to our final opportunity for public comment. We got anybody online? I see none in the room. So I think we will close that final public comment opportunity and move to council comments. We'll start with you, Councilman Jorgensen this evening.
Yeah, I'd love to. I'd like to give my condolences to Carolyn's whole family. I, I got to know Carolyn pretty well, being a part of the golf community the last few years. And would make it a point to stop in to the clubhouse just to chat with her and to say hello and give her some encouraging words because she, like you said, she can, you know, be pretty spirited sometimes. So she was, she was a fun lady to get to know. And so just my condolences to the family. And that, that was a bit of a shock to, to see that happen.
Councilman Morgan's.
Yeah, I would also like to share my condolences for Carolyn Ray's family. And they'll, they'll be in my prayers tonight. And just on another note, I am looking forward to tomorrow for going down to our Capitol and just experiencing the local government day. Should, should learn a lot, so I'm hoping. It's always a blast.
And just to confirm, eight o'clock is?
Yep, eight a.m. We're, we're going to swing by and pick up barn.
Okay, Councilman McCarty.
I think I said anytime I lose an employee, so, you know, I didn't really know her that well. I'm sorry to say.
Yeah, she, she was a character. And David described her as salty, which I think is fair. I think that she would accept that too.
Councilman By.
Too. Want to express my condolences for Carolyn. I didn't get to know her very well, but at times I did matter. Yeah, she is salty. Yeah, she, she is, she was fun to be around, that's for sure. But, yeah, looking forward to tomorrow. I'm going to our Capitol, so, yeah.
You're going to meet with the governor, right?
We're going to get tea.
Tea with the governor.
Almost competing with coffee with the mayor.
That's right, yeah. Exactly. Almost. Yeah. We had, speaking of coffee with the mayor, we did have a nice time with Superintendent Corby and talking about what was going on in education and also what's going on with the bond issue and, and some exciting things. So check it out if you get a chance. And then finally, I'm going to make one more comment regarding winter weather, snow, et cetera. I did have some constituent comments regarding the clearing of sidewalks, which is actually the responsibility of the property owner and not the city to, to clear your sidewalks. And so I just would like to throw out that reminder to everybody that, you know, our sidewalks are still part of, part of our property owner responsibility. And this one has been particularly tough. First of all, because of the large amount of snow we got to start and then the extreme cold temperatures. So it's been a challenge. And I know that the PD helped with code enforcement in the downtown area about, you know, trying to get some of the downtown sidewalks cleared off. And that was a little tougher this year than I think it's been in past years. So, so anyway, just commend our city crews for the hard work they do and, and making sure we can get around. But also we have a responsibility as individuals as well. And with that, is there any other business that needs to come before the council?
Would note that Mayor, Mayor Lou is now the president of KPP for this session.
Yep, for this, this year, it's been, it was an interesting conversation at our board meeting last week because for the last, gosh, what's it been, almost eight years? They've had presidents, started with Larry Payne. And when Larry got, got sick, got ill and there were some things going on. And the person that was going to succeed him as president said, hey, I'm, I don't think I'm ready yet. So they gave Larry another year. And then they gave the next person to, an extra year. And then the next person an extra year. And our bylaws say that you can only, that it's a one-year term. And so you can only serve on the board eight years. And so if you do the math, if you start out as a, you have to start out as secretary. So if you don't start out in your very first year, you could never be president. Because if it was two-year terms. And so we looked at several options and, and it was, it was an interesting conversation. But we ended up going back to the, what our bylaws state, which is one-year term. So I will serve for the year twenty twenty five.
Very nice.
Okay, any other business? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for being able to be here today early.
Thanks.
Tom's the first game for Hillsborough.
Six o'clock is the girls' game and then seven thirty.
Ben, what's your question?
Could I just get a couple specifics on the, the land that was sold? So Gary McLeod had restored the property to, to a, a house? Is it just a house?
Yeah, we had a house that was donated on Grand Street. And then we did a sealed bid to find the person to, to, to purchase that and rehab it.
So he's helped like renovate that house?
Yeah, he renovated it and it's back on the market for rent.
Cool. And who previously donated?
They make some good cookies.
I can't hear you, Ben. Ben, can you just call me on the cell phone? It might be a little easier. We're having a hard time with the audio.
Okay, sounds good.
Alright, thanks.